I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll get me back up here again. Chairman Graham couldn't be here this evening, so I'm filling in. Our agenda this evening consists of, first off, the consent agenda, which is the minutes from June 22nd, a planned unit development, final plan, site plan design review for Raising Canes Chicken Fingers, and then items three and four we will hear together, site plan design review, and preliminary plat for Coronado Center. After that, we'll have an election that we are a little bit overdue on for some officers this year, and we'll move on to other business. First off, the consent agenda, any discussion and/or motions concerning that. Yes, Ms. Banks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Ms. Duhon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Item number two is the planned unit development, site plan of Raising Canes Chicken Fingers, and Mr. Allen, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Again, before this evening is a request from Raising Canes Chicken Fingers to amend the existing Amsterdoring Landing PUD final plan, and also request approval for their site plan design review application. So it's a, as you know, we, a while ago, combined PUD final plan and site plan design review into one application as an option for developers, so it's just a one application before you hear this evening, but it is, again, an amendment to the PUD final plan, as well as site plan design review for approximately a 3700 square foot fast food restaurant with drive-through. You can see here on the location map, it's at the southeast corner, northeast Coronado Drive, and Amsterdoring Parkway. It is in the Amsterdoring Landing Area 1, part of the Amsterdoring Landing PUD final plan. It is a vacant lot currently, and was initially planned to be a bank use, and because that was the case, and the fact that drive-through, only drive-through facilities specifically permitted in Area 1 was for a drive-through bank, drive-through restaurants were only allowed in Area 2 and in Area 3, so the north side of Coronado, both east and west of Amsterdoring Parkway, they do need to modify the PUD final plan, which is why that is occurring along with the site plan design review. So again, the site itself is about one acre in size. The zoning is GBRO, which is the restricted overlay for the Amsterdoring Landing project. I won't get into all the details of the previous actions approvals, but as you know, there's a lot that has gone on and has been amended along, through the years for, specifically Area 1, for Amsterdoring Landing. Boiler down staff is recommending approval of the application with six conditions. I'll kind of walk through some of the items of particular interest. Access, and our city engineer, Ben McCabe, here is available as well to answer any questions specific to that. Access was an item that we had brought up as something that needed to be addressed, and just because, again, there's the change from the originally proposed use of a drive-through bank now to a drive-through quick-service restaurant. Again, not necessarily looking at radical deviations in traffic patterns or amount of traffic, but did need to request that a level of service be identified for the intersections off-site as well as onsite. Do you want to jump down to specifically, should note signage. Signage was, you've seen that in your packet, they provided all of their, kind of their sign package for the project, but as you know, Amsterdoring Landing is, does need to adhere to a master sign plan that has been adopted, and as you also know, probably has been amended several times. So the signed package that you saw was just representation of what they're looking to put out there. It is not necessarily, again, it's not a part of the approval here tonight. Should note that landscaping, this may have been a little confusing to kind of follow along, but as you know, each of the pad sites, kind of curb-in, as it were, is, they're responsible for their own landscaping. But for example, the buffer along Coronado, along Amsterdoring Parkway, those have already been installed by RED Development, original developer of the site. So, again, in this case, there's kind of two different numbers we're looking at, and it all kind of combines to the fact that they get credit for quite a bit of plant units, as you see here. So if you look at their landscape plan, which can show here as well, there's quite a bit of landscaping on the site as it's proposed, so they certainly well exceed what's required. With that, I'll jump to the conditions, and then we'll talk a little bit about the building So just generally, again, there are six conditions. Again, they're all pretty straightforward, just verifying the intersection capacity, number two there, of the existing intersections. Again, they were updating the existing traffic study that was adopted for the overall area many years ago. Lighting plan has been included, so we can start processing that through the administrative process. Just some information regarding to, regarding there, any screening that would need to occur for any utility meters and equipment, just emphasizing how that needs to be screened, number four, and then number five, the same way, with the trash enclosure, and again, number six, just confirming that the sign package that you see before you tonight is not a part of this approval. So with that, just allow me to jump over to some of the other drawings here. May it be obvious that I'm not left-handed. Apologies for this. I have one working mic, it's on the wrong side for me. You can see here, here's the landscaping, for example. Definitely want to give the applicant credit for providing quite a bit of that in excess of what was required. So they're looking at really enhancing the site, along with what their building is being proposed to look like. There is, even though you're not approving signs per se, but they have been allowed, per the master sign plan, a monument sign. So really haven't seen many of those on Coronado on the south side here. This is supposed to really be one of those first for kind of the pad sites on the south side, with all the inline shops along Target, TJ Maxx and such. They're all the larger pylon signs out along the interstate, so this would be kind of one of the first ones that's kind of for that area that's along Coronado. But again, just wanted to make, mention that it is allowed. So with that, just jumping to the building design, I'm sure the applicant will talk more in-depth about their design and also their operation of their restaurant. You can see here, we did have a pre-application meeting, talked about some of the, several weeks ago, did talk about the design standards as relates to Amsterdoring Landing PUD. So they are meeting the palette in terms of materials and colors to fit on the site there. You can see even the roofing material fits in with that, the theme that's already in place out of Amsterdoring Landing. Some of the signs, again, I think they're, that one, that larger one, the wall sign that you see there on the bottom, may not exactly meet the master sign plan, so that's something why we're kind of putting that aside for them to have that discussion with RED. They may have some updates here tonight, talk about how that fits into the whole sign package, but all in all, the signs that you see here is what's being proposed as far as we're aware. And with that, I think that's really the extent of it. These are different elevations, as you can see, and does fit in very well with what's already in place out there. So without anything addition to add, I'll certainly stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allen? I guess not.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation?
Yes, okay, I'm understanding that this is the microphone that works. Hello, I'm Robert Montgomery with Raising Canes. I'm at 6800 Bishop Road in Plano, Texas, 75024. I'm very happy to be before you. Thank you, commission, members, and city staff, and city of Blue Springs for allowing us to bring this project forward. We're very excited about it. I'll just, anytime I get a chance to get in front of a board or council to talk about Raising Canes, I'd like to do so, just to introduce the concept. I don't know if you've been able to go out on our website and understand who Raising Canes is, but I'd like to let you know a little bit about us. Obviously, we started out in Baton Rouge, and our founder is huge on giving back to the community. They actually founded a show off of him years ago. After Katrina came through, he was giving back so much to the community that they came up with the Secret Millionaire Show, and they shot the first episode off of Todd Graves, and then he's done so much since then, and I'm real proud to be working for him and doing the development for Raising Canes. Now, the trick is, for me to figure out how to go through the slideshow here, I will tell you, Raising Canes, I got a few pictures there of the restaurants that we do. One of the things is our quality in our building and in our landscape. We do not use fake brick, we don't use fake stucco, we use real stone, real brick, real stucco. We cut no corners on our building or our landscape. One of my friends works for a quick-serve restaurant, and he was talking about how they spend $7,000 to $10,000 in our landscape plan. We spend $30,000 to $40,000 just on irrigation. So we put in a really nice landscape, because 50% to 60% of our customers maybe don't come, do not come in the restaurant, they're going to drive around and use the drive-through service, so if we're going to do that, we want them to have a wonderful experience coming around their restaurant. So that's the reason we go the lengths we do. And obviously, you know the site, y'all been out to the mall, and you know, I think that's what I'm showing, I'm kind of, a little bit of a disadvantage here, I guess I can see it on the screen here, but our site is located there. We're very excited. We've been in the St. Louis area, and we thought the natural jump was to come west over to here. We've got several, we've got four sites we're working on in this Kansas City DMA, and my civil engineer is here from Premier Engineering, and my architect as well. So any questions that we might have on the civil engineering or the architecture, they will be happy to answer. But again, there's our landscape plan, and we do, as we, as mentioned, we spend a lot of money on our landscape because we feel like it's one of our staples, one of the paramount things that we do. We show out here a monument sign that we talked about, there's a little wall that goes through the site there. This site was originally oriented for a bank, and we're coming through with our restaurant. You can tell back here at the back, it's landscaped pretty heavily right there. Well, that's where our order board, our menu board is, so we make sure that we have fresh flowers and things planted there in the wintertime. Obviously, it's going to be tough to have any annuals there, but we also have very nice evergreens, things like that, for our customers to see, and then we come around the building and you exit the site. We're buried into the site pretty deeply, so we feel like we've got tons of stack for any of our customers, and then we also have, you know, obviously, there's a parking lot here, and then we, you know, exit and come out this way and go out to use a signalized entrance for a, this, the signalization for this, entrances for this very large mall, so we feel like we've got adequate circulation and, that we have for the sites. We don't think we'll have any trouble here. Again, we mentioned our elevations, and we hit upon the mural here a little bit. We have gone down the road and done quite a few sites now with Target. Target likes us a lot. We've been doing some carve-outs in some of their parking lots, and RED Development likes us as well. We're doing another project with RED in the Dallas area. I want to give you a little bit of story about our mural and why it's important to us. Todd Graves, when he first came up with this idea, he came up with it in his college class at LSU, and the college professors told him there was no way he was going to be able to do a business plan. This was his business class, he said, "There's no way you can run a restaurant just selling one product, chicken fingers." And so the college professor failed him. He came out, tried to go to the bank, and the banks were not loaning money for this concept, so he said, "Okay," he went to Alaska and worked on the salmon, on the salmon boats and made money, and came back and started the first restaurant off of LSU campus, and he was gutting the inside of the building, and when he did, he found this really cool mural on the wall. Well, they liked it so much that he thought, "Well, this is kind of the look I want to have for my restaurant," but he still didn't have a name for it, and some of his friends said, "Hey, you know, what are you going to call this place?" And he said, "Well, I don't know." And they go, "Well, who's been by your side the whole time?" Well, he, his dog, Kane, he has a golden lab, so they go, "Why don't you call it Raising Canes?" So that's how he came up with the name, but then also, they transferred it into the mural, which is, it's a hand-painted mural by our artist. He does all of them for us. He's done 250 of them so far for us on our restaurants. So that's why the mural's real important to us. We know it's a little bit maybe different for us to look at that, but if you look at the site, well, if you look at this, this is actually facing in to the development. This is not facing out to the street, so it's really going to be our drive-around customers that's going to see this, and it's going to have trees and things here, so it's not going to be something that the general public's going to have issue with, and I think most of them are going to appreciate it, which most of our customers do. So anyway, I'd just like to plug that, to see that I really would like to have the ability to put this painted mural on the wall. If there's an issue going through the painted mural, not wanting to paint it on the building, we have done it before on a substrate and mounted it, but it just doesn't, to us, have the same effect as a painted, hand-painted mural. That's the reason I wanted to bring this forward to you a little bit, and I know we don't approve signage tonight, but I wanted you all to understand why we feel it's important. And then as well, we have the monument sign that I showed you earlier out on the street, and I just wanted to, to bring this in and kind of, to go over a couple of things with you. I wanted to say why we feel like, whoops, why we feel like we're a fit here. I want to, I want to tell you the, and I'll finish up here in just a second. Canes has six main pillars, and I'll talk about them here at the bottom, I wanted to talk about that. One is education. We will own the school district. We're going to be your biggest supporter for your school districts with fundraisers and things like that, we're going to be big on it. My wife's a teacher, she came with me this time, and she knows, because we come to her school, and we do so much there for the school. Another item, one of our six pillars is feeding the hungry. We feel like we're a restaurant company, we feel like no one should go hungry, so we're going to be feeding the hungry. We take food out to shelters, we do different things like that for them. Also, since our namesake is after a dog, we will be supporting your pet centers, your Humane Society centers. We also support active lifestyles, so we'll be supporting races, bike races and runs and things like that. We also support entrepreneurism and business development, and then we have a sixth category, it's called everything else, and that's because we don't know what else this community might want, and we will, we want you to come to us when we get this restaurant, if you guys approve it, and we can come to your community. The first thing that our crew does when we set up and get our 55 employees hired, we ask them to first, name the restaurant, and then the second thing is, find out what they want to do as a community involvement program, and then that's what they'll take care of for the rest of the life of that restaurant. Entertain any questions you have for me, as again, I like to talk about anything that I can about Raising Canes, to let you all know who we are, and I really encourage you to go to our website and find out about Raising Canes. So, thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicants? Okay, I guess not. Thank you very much. I'm glad to see that pad site being developed and look forward to having you come to town.
We're very excited. We can build this restaurant in about 114 days, once we go through permitting, which we have not submitted yet, I don't think have, so, okay, so we're excited. This, I'll be here for any questions, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Bring it back up here for discussion. Motions, we have a PU development, or a final plan, site plan design review, and six conditions. Ms. Banks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the PU DS-06-15-4862, the Adams Dairy Landing PUD for Raising Canes Chicken Fingers.
With the six-
With the six staff conditions.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Duhon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan's been approved. Welcome to town. We move now to items three and four, which is the site plan design review for Coronado Center, and also the preliminary plat, and I believe Mr. Jury will be handling this item.
All right, so we'll be going over the site plan design review and the preliminary plat for the Coronado Center, which the main tenant for this building will be Reese Nichols, they're the applicants for, for trying to get this building through. It's also not been platted yet, so it'll go through the preliminary plat process. It's located on Sunnyside School Road and northeast Coronado, on that southeast corner, and it's approximately 2.27 acres, and it's very vacant right now, so we'd love to see It's zoned general business with the ADPO overlay, and... So the applicant came to us, and they want to create this, this development in two phases, but they don't know where, when the second phase is going to happen, so we're just looking at the first phase for the site plan design review currently. There will be one building, approximately 10,125 square feet, it'll, there'll be two tenant spaces for that one building. Previously, the Appearance Review Committee actually looked at this site plan design review, and they recommended approval as long as the applicant addressed the trash enclosure, moving that, as well as the utility equipment, and they would also ask that they would try to meet the landscape requirements, and also screen any unattractive features in the, in the development. The staff recommends the approval of this with eight conditions, and I'll work through, for the site plan design review at least, and I'll work through some of the staff comments on this. I went over the phasing process, there's no date or actual plans been made for the second phase, the second building, at this point yet, but, but they are wishing for that to happen. As for access, there's ingress egress to Sunnyside School Road, but there isn't to northeast Coronado except through Adams Dairy Place, which is the private road owned by Walmart. So just on the eastern side of the property, the parking lot goes through from Sunnyside School Road all the way to Adams Dairy Place, and there's an access easement to Walmart's lot, but no access easement to northeast Coronado, going from there north. So we're asking the applicant to put that on, on their, their list of things to do for the, the final plat, and they're in the process of getting that as well, so they understand that. Setbacks have been met. As for parking in this development, they exceed the, the minimum parking requirement, and that is mainly due because of the restrictions and requests of Walmart and, and the, the property owner, asking them to provide more parking spaces than the city asks them to. As for traffic and transportation, the, as far as we know, the, for phase one, building one, the traffic generation should be able to, or the, the site should be able to sustain the traffic, but dependent on future land use plans and traffic generation for phase two, we may ask for another traffic study to be completed. Sidewalk and path improvement, the, the trail along northeast Coronado will be required to be milled and overlaid, and then the, the western side of the property along Sunnyside School Road will be asked, the applicant will be asked to provide sidewalk on that side to ADA standards. There is an existing fire hydrant in the southeast corner of the property in the way of that sidewalk that we're asking to be moved along Sunnyside School Road, so they will have to move that, and any proposed new location shall be subject to Public Works and the CJC Fire Protection District. The trash enclosure, as directed by the Appearance Review Committee, was moved, and, and staffed deemed it in a better location than it was previously. Previously, it was in the middle of the lot, and now it's on the southeast corner of the parking lot. General landscaping, this is where they're asking for deviation from the, the general requirements for landscaping. They exceed the total plant unit requirements for their development, but there's a couple places that they do not meet the standards for specific places, and these two places are on the north transitional buffer along northeast Coronado, and then the open space landscaping as well. But their reasoning for this is because they don't want to double-spend on planting, because they are planning on doing a phase two, and they don't want to rip out a lot of the landscaping that, that will happen during the, the construction phase. But since they are over the required units as a, development as a whole, we're asking for the allowance of that. For stormwater detention, the preliminary stormwater management plan appears to be adequate, but a final, a finalized plan will be asked to be submitted with the construction documents, and development and maintenance agreement should be executed outlining construction and maintenance responsibilities for onsite stormwater management systems and stormwater quality, BNP's. There's also an issue with a sewer. In the northeast corner, I believe, there wasn't, there's some discrepancies in how the sewer lines would match up to the city lines, and so they'll have to go to the south. And we determined that the south line, or the, the city line to the south of the property has sufficient capacity to serve the two proposed buildings, but each building must have its own service line, and these two service lines cannot connect together. As for, from there, I'll go to- As for, from there, I'll go to the preliminary plat, and go over a few of the staff comments on that as well. There's 10 conditions on this one. Some of them are overlapping, such as the ingress egress easement. We ask that driveway improvements be required prior to final plating. The sidewalk, which we went over, and the fire hydrant in the southeast corner, we asked that- We asked that dedicated landscape buffers and berms be outlined or shaded on the, on the site plan, and explicitly shown on the final plat. The, and then, as well as the stormwater detention that we went over, in, earlier. The language dedicating detention and stormwater quality areas must also be included, similar to, or it must be included on the final plat. So we'll go over the staff recommendations for this, and the, the site plan design review for the preliminary plat first, though. Many of them are pretty basic, but they all, such as the, the ingress egress easement is one of the ones that we called out earlier. We'll ask that permitting is done for all construction. Landscape buffers and berms be dedicated. The stormwater, stormwater areas must be dedicated as well. The sidewalk on Northeast Coronado and Sunnyside School Road be in place, as well as the regular as-built drawings being submitted, maintenance and bonding and fire protection clauses that we included in this. As for the site plan design review, staff recommendations, we had eight of them, and starting with number two, the developer shall be allowed to utilize alternative landscaping plan, that still meets the total landscaping requirements, but deficient in a couple areas. We also ask that each building have its own sanitary sewer service line, and they cannot connect together. The existing fire hydrant in southeast corner must be moved to the, to the review of Public Works and the Fire Department. Also, they, they need to submit the erosion control plan, stormwater management plan, and also a development and maintenance agreement. The, there also will probably be quite a bit of grading to this site, so they will most likely need to file for a permit with MDNR, and, because it's probably going to be more than one acre, and we ask that, that be done as well. And from there, we'll look at the, oh, wrong one. Look at some of the, the drawings and, and overview of the- Here we go. This is the building layout, and I'm sure the applicant will talk a little bit more about this, and the, the Appearance Review Committee found everything in good order, with the design of the, the building, and, and its layout on the site, so. And with that, if there's any questions?
Ms. Duhon.
You said this, this building is for Reese Nichols Real Estate?
Yes.
Is that correct? So the second building, whenever it comes up, is that going to be for real estate as well, or something else?
As far as applicant knows, I believe they don't have anyone in line yet, to my understanding.
So this is kind of like an investment-type building that you want to add to this property? Okay.
And there will be a second tenant in this building as well, it has not been named, so.
Can, can you explain the phasing again? Site and building?
So, the phasing on the, on the eastern half of the site is where the building will go. The, there's stormwater detention as well on, over, over in this area, the building up here. However, for the first phase, they only installed half the parking that they're planning on. The other half will be on the western side, as well as the, the building will be on the western side, af, when they, when they go through that process. But as for now, landscaping is all in the buffers, on the, on the western side, northern side, and southern sides. But where the building for Phase Two is going, they're just going to seed and, and let sod grow there.
So the access to the east building is through Walmart's parking lot?
That's-
Only?
Well, they're, they're actually building that driveway through-
All the way through?
Yeah, all the way through to Sunnyside School Road.
So in essence, that becomes a street?
Yes.
And it will be a street, whenever the other building gets built too, because everybody's going to use that as a shortcut?
Ms. Banks.
Well, I have a question. You said that on the landscaping, they don't want to add the rest of it on the north side, but they're building on the west side. So what's that got to do with the north side of the building's landscaping?
On the north buffer, the north buffer runs all the way from the eastern side, all the way to the western side. So there's a portion of the north buffer that is on the western half of the property. And, and so, that's part of that reasoning, I guess.
So, so is there, I mean, I think of Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Two could be 10 years from now, and we don't have any landscaping. Right?
Should, let me look at it. This is what Phase Two should be looking like. This is Phase Two, their, their desire of, of the, the lot, after the building goes in. They're not quite sure what the square footage might be, quite yet, but, but the landscaping around that is, is what they're looking for. But, yes, as, as of now, they don't know when they're going to have, have a tenant come in, or when they can build, or when they, when they will build, so, so that is up for guessing, I guess, at this point.
I do have another question. What is the ratio of parking spaces versus the building? It seems excessive, almost.
I believe, I believe currently in the Phase One, there's 50 parking spots, and Phase Two, I think there's closer to 98 or so.
So what's, what's the minimum is required for this type of building?
For Phase One, let me look at that. I believe it's 30, oh, let's see, 34 spaces were required, and they have 50. So they're exceeding, exceeding what they, but this is mainly because of Walmart stipulations that they put on, on the sale, I'm guessing, of the property.
It's real estate, almost.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. We, when we spoke earlier today, I asked you a question about the access from the sidewalk along Coronado. There's a spot in the notes that say there is no access from Coronado to the entrance to the building, but yet I see a sidewalk on the plan, so which is-
Yes, that, I guess that comment, I meant, there's no direct access to the, the side-facing Coronado, but the sidewalk does run all the way down to the, the southern side of the building, and there's access through the sidewalk to the south side, main entrance. But the building, the building is oriented to the south, and there's no, no entrance on the north.
Okay, and my second question is, since we're, the main access off of this is now going to be off of Sunnyside School Road, and as was previously stated, this may become a shortcut into Walmart. Was, Sunnyside School Road, is it a collector's street, or was it, is it a residential street? Was it intended for all of this?
I, yeah, I believe it's collector.
It is. I didn't, wouldn't have thought that, running just between those apartments like that. Okay, well, good. It runs all the way, but that, between, what is that, Arti Mize and Coronado, they're- Are there any other questions for staff?
I'd just like, what slide is it that shows the landscaping on the parking lot?
Uh, let me see. For Phase One or Phase Two also?
Phase One.
For just Phase One. I believe-
Eighty-nine.
The eighty-nine, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that the landscape one? Is that the landscape one? Oh, here we go. Actually, sorry, ninety-two. Provides a clearer picture, at least. And that's what will be installed, Phase One, on page ninety-two.
Thank you.
I have a question, but I don't know if it's for him, or more of our discussion.
Ms. Duhon, go right ahead, and we'll figure it out.
I'm just wondering, since we don't have a timeline as to when that second building may be, if there is a way to put something in here that says if it's not built by a certain time, that there'll need to be something done to that landscaping, so that it's not just sitting there without that finished for the next 10 to 15 years?
Well, it will be sodded, so I mean, it's not, it's going to be dirt.
Right, right.
And I guess that's a question for staff, whether or not something could be put in there, that, a sunset or something on the landscape waiver. But my thought is that this is really no different than if, in this preliminary plat, we were to subdivide this lot into two pieces, there would be no landscaping on the second piece anyway, because it, we, it wasn't coming before us, so.
Okay.
I, I'm not, it doesn't have any landscaping on it now, it's not going to change.
Okay.
That was staff's perspective as well.
And this way, we don't have to go through plating and everything else, dividing it up into two pieces and all of that, so. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jury, and with the applicant, I'd like to have his say, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission, for consideration tonight. My name's Jeff DeGaspary with DeGaspary Architects, 6240 West 135th in Overland Park. This has been a challenging site to develop, as everybody knows, this has got quite a slope to it, it's a small, narrow lot, it's got great exposure, and a very popular location, just a little bit tough to develop for the site work costs. So this, this owner is moving ahead with this. It's been a little slow and going, because working with Walmart, it's a little bit a slow-moving machine, but they had stipulations on the property that we have had to meet, which you've already noticed, is one of which is the parking criteria. They require a one per 200 parking count, which is a five per thousand square foot of building, which is much more than the one per 300 that the city has. That basically limited our square footage on the site to around 18,000 square feet. So we're going in with about a 10,000 square foot Phase One building. Primarily, the Reese Nichols branch will be moving to this 8,000 square foot area. The 2,000 square foot is left over for a small tenant there on the, I guess that would be the, the west side. And then, the future building is about an 8,000-foot pad, that they're trying to market at this point. They'll probably not move ahead until they have an LOI that somebody's interested to be, for them to build it, they won't build it speculatively. So we will grade out the entire site. The site grading was, was challenging, but the parking lot, it has about a 4% grade all through it, so it'll be okay. We've made two pads for the buildings, worked out the detention at the lower end of the site, along with the BNP's, that occur in several different little ponds as it goes down to clean the water, as it comes through the site, and then out, as it exits out and detained up the lower end of the site. The landscaping, I may just reiterate that we have done, per staff's recommendations, we have met the out, the exterior plantings, you'll see the street trees and the trees along the residential side, the, basically, we didn't put the trees in, kind of like across the front of the building on the parking lot site. So, if you do look at the site plan, there are a lot of street trees around this empty lot. It'll be attractive, it'll be more attractive than it is now, it'll be seeded out, and with, with street trees and, and buffer trees on the south side, so we believe, we have raised the bar on that, as per staff's recommendations. As well, we moved the trash enclosure to a more inconspicuous and easier-to-access site, part of the site. But we will just build, you know, the majority of the site will be bed out, built out, except for a leveled pad, that will be grass, until we can find a tenant, and they certainly are intent on finding that as soon as possible, but we, they cannot promise anything in the market, but they're trying hard. They want to build it all at once, if they possibly could. So certainly, we're in a big rush to get Reese Nichols in there, they're wanting to get in there now, so we're going to be probably submitting for building permit for this in a week or so, so that you're trying to get into, into the ground here in the fall, so we can get ahead of the winter time. That's the general plan on the site. As far as the building goes, I think staff has shown the colored renderings, we, it's primarily a stone and brick masonry building on the lower portions of the building, with some stuccos, warm earth-colored stuccos. I did brick some real stuff, here, so the stones is an earthy color with the darker brick, and some of our water tables and sills will be a cast stone element. The primary color of the upper portion of the building will be a brown stucco along the upper portions, and then there are some detailings, where you'll see some banding, I don't know if I can do that, maybe, if you want me to try to take a look, and try to get that elevation back up there. And a lighter trim near the top, and then the, this is basically the little, the corners across the building. Have to give it a color. Very, great, okay. So, yeah, we can see that we try to make a nice, attractive building, it fits within the styles of that area, along, across the street especially, this, this style is fairly predominant, we want to be an attractive neighbor, we believe we've got a Class A office building here that others would be interested to be attended in, as well, if Reese Nichols would be proud to call theirself their home. And the secondary building, which will not be before you tonight, but that will come back to the SBDR review.
I, I know you're showing the things, can you move over back toward the mic?
I wandered away from my microphone, I'm sorry. So, yeah, once, once we get the second building's tenant in line, we'll come back with a new building designed to go through the review process again, but it'll certainly be a companion building of this style. I guess, if there are any other questions, I think that completes my portion.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? I, I know that Walmart has made this less easy, shall we say, with some restrictions and things like that. As far as the second tenant here, and the tenant on the, on the other building, are we talking strictly office, or service, or-
That's certainly-
I'm guessing no retail?
Right. Anything, and Walmart has a pretty long list of things they will not allow on this parcel, obviously, that competes in any way or manage to the Walmart. So it's primarily going to be office space, or professional services, professional office services, insurance company, or other things like that. That's primarily who they're searching for right now, are those type of users. That's primarily who they're searching for right now, are those type of users. It would be limited, certainly by the GB district, but also Walmart's REAs have quite a restriction on the retail capacity of these lots, so it is fairly restrictive.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll bring it back up here for any further discussion. We will vote on item number three, the site plan and design review first, and then we'll vote on the preliminary plat second. Discussion on the site plan. Any motions? With the eight staff conditions.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Duhon.
Correct me if I have the wrong number here, but I move that we approve the case number SPDR-06-15-4863 for the Coronado Center with the eight staff recommendations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The site plan has been approved. We move on to the preliminary plat. Again, we have 10 conditions on that one.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve case file number PP-06-15-4861 with the 10 staff recommendations.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Banks. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Preliminary plat's been approved. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing this. We are now going to have some elections. To start off, Acting Chairman Graham, let it be known that he's willing to do whatever we vote for him to do, so.
Good thing.
That doesn't mean we should vote him into every single office, but...
We should tell him so.
Yeah, there are others who aren't here. We could vote them into a couple of them, too. But I would start with entertaining a motion for the next chairman, as you all know. Chairman Trozen has resigned, so that spot is open. Chairman Graham could serve, or Acting Chairman Graham could now serve a full two terms on that position, if anybody wanted to nominate him to do that.
I would love to nominate him.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Graham as chairman. Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good for Mr. Graham. And that opens up the vice chairman's seat, and there is no one sitting in that right now, other than, I've been appointed kind of as an interim to sit up here when he's gone. Any nominations for that seat? I don't mind. But I would like to give somebody else a chance, if they want it, because I've been up here before. Anybody want to volunteer? No. I'm looking for somebody to make a motion, to make a nomination on something. I can't do it, because I'm sitting here, so.
Mr. Jerome?
Mr. Haney.
I'd like to nominate him for that, Joe.
We have a nomination. Do we have any other nominations? Do I hear a second on that one?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Banks? Looks like you're up next. We move on to some of our sitting seats. Currently, Ms. Duhon is the representative to the Board of Adjustment. Usually, we just say, are you willing to continue doing that?
Sure. I haven't had to do very much.
Would anybody else like to do that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Make it easy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Graham has been her alternate.
So, can we nominate him for that?
You certainly can.
So, I nominate him for alternate, Board of Adjustment alternate.
All right. Do I hear a second? Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Historic Preservation Representative. I have been doing that for quite a few years. I enjoy doing it. I would be glad to continue doing it.
And I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Technical Review Committee. Mr. Bartolata, you've been doing that.
That's very difficult. I'll keep going.
Unless there's something else you'd rather do.
I would like to continue that.
Okay.
I nominate Phil.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Development Advisory Commission Representative, Mr. Sanders, you are listed there.
Yeah. It seems like that one has some things. I'll do it again. Sure.
Any official...
So moved, so seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, now, there we go.
Solid Waste Management Commission, Mr. Abbott, you've kind of been our default on that one, since you have the expertise.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion for George Abbott to be Solid Waste Management Commission Representative.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Downtown Review Board Representative, Ms. Banks, that has been your position.
Did you want to go here? Okay.
I nominate.
All right.
Continue that job.
Ms. Banks has been nominated and seconded. Any others? All those in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Haney is her alternate representative. Any nominations, or would you like to continue?
I make a motion for...
All right. Motion by Ms. Banks, second by Ms. Duhon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's it. It was nice and easy. Any other business?
Yes, I understand, I believe there's a lengthy meeting on the 27th. Is that right?
That is correct. I don't know if this is working.
I don't think it is.
Is this working? Who knows? All right, we'll give it a shot, anyway. Yes, next meeting, Monday, July 27th. We look forward to bringing before you the full and complete rewritten Unified Development Code, the UDC. So, appreciate Commissioner Billups, Commissioner Bartolata, sitting on the steering committee. They're the ones who, I guess, that's the reason for the food. Thank you to Karen for bringing the food this evening. But, anyway, they kind of ran through pretty much the whole code, I mean, just in terms of each chapter, and the major changes and such in each. And we'll be providing you with, hopefully, the final, complete, clean version for the meeting on the 27th. The next meeting for review is at Development Advisory Commission, so appreciate Commissioner Sanders agreeing to continue with that, keep continuity there. And that'll be next Monday. Then, immediately thereafter, as quickly as we can, we'll get any changes incorporated and move it forward for your review then for the 27th. So, because this is a full rewrite, we're not going to go line by line in terms of our meeting, but we will probably take, expect a good hour for that. So, we've got some time. Maybe we'll bring some food again, and make the night of it. But, yeah, please plan accordingly. And if you have any comments between now and then, you know, make sure we've got certain things covered, that you had any kind of, you know, pet issues, or certain things in the code that you want to make sure we're keeping, or excluding, or addressing, just let me or Jim know between now and then. So, again, we're working on the final draft for your review, and hopefully, we can have, again, it'll be a public hearing, and it'll be, hopefully, a recommendation for adoption to the City Council the following Monday, which is August 3rd. We're kind of, honestly, we're kind of rushing here at the end, but we're trying to keep it just kind of moving along from one table to the next, so to speak, so that we allow as much time as possible, August and September, to do some more individualized-type training. So, there is enough new information and specifications in there that we'll kind of do some education informational type of campaign for boards and commissions, like yourselves, as well as the development community. So, we want to take, allow as much time as possible, say, two months, because we're aiming for the first of October, essentially, kind of the first Monday in October, technically, to launch the new code. So, start the first of the fiscal year, as well as kind of the first of the fourth quarter of the calendar year. Just, I could probably show you kind of a rundown of our calendar, but we can certainly get that to you as well. But, again, kind of backing up from October, that's why we're looking at kind of Monday, 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 to get everything done, so. With that, we'll see what we get in terms of any kind of public comment as well, you know, what changes need to be incorporated and such, but that's our tentative schedule, and we're going to try to stick with that.
And did I see a sign posted? Is there another public hearing that Monday as well?
Yeah, yes, yeah, thank you. Yes, Discount Tire, thank you for mentioning it. Discount Tire, condition use permit. What was, these old banks that were no longer banks, proposed to be a commerce bank on Seven Highway, I guess, the old Walmart, depending on how long you've been here, next to Taco Bell, east side of Seven Highway, by the, what's now Goodwill and Ace Hardware and such. So, there's a vacant property there, just north of Taco Bell, on the east side of Seven. Was at one point, I think, even went through the old approval processes, for a commerce bank. Is now being proposed for Discount Tire. You may have heard, they were looking at, at one point initially, at Adams Landing on the north side, east of Arby's, but for one reason or another, that just didn't pan out.
I believe we approved that, but...
Did we go through that approval?
I think, yes, we did.
Yeah, you're right. So, you've seen a lot of approvals related to Discount Tire, either what they're initially approving at Adams Landing, or what was, what they're looking at now, which is an old commerce bank proposal. So, I think that's all we have for the 27th. So, we'll do the condition use permit for Discount Tire, and then we'll move right into the Unified Development Code. So, any comments, questions in the meantime? If you want to see, you know, certain chapters in this draft form currently, let me or Jim know as well, you know, so we don't want to try to overwhelm everybody before that meeting, but it will seem overwhelming, I think, no matter when you get it, because it's the full, brand-new code. So, what we're looking to do is kind of provide a summary of each chapter as well, so you know kind of what to look for. So, we're not just going to dump it on cold with no context or explanation. So, that's what we're working on this week.
Okay. Any other announcements? Anybody else got anything they would like to put out there? I would like to, I don't know, it's kind of very preliminary in the stages here, but get everybody to mark their calendars. Something new in Blue Springs. On September 12th, the Historical Society is going to be doing a Taste of Blue Springs event with all the restaurants in town at the high school, that Saturday afternoon and evening. So, it'll be something new and interesting and fun for everybody to come do and raise a little bit of money. There will also be donations there for the Community Services League Food Bank as part of that. So, tickets, I don't believe we have them yet. But, yes, there is a discounted price. I believe it's $12 in advance, but don't hold me to that. So, anyway, just mark your calendars for that. If there isn't anything else, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned?